Okay, it's 5:30, so I'm gonna call the Atomo City Council meeting to order, and I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. And if everybody would rise please for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Basu?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Cavaness? Mayor Johnson?
Here. The next item is to approve tonight's consent agendas. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
The next item is to approve our actual agenda for tonight's city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
The next item is our city administrator's report. So I'll turn it over to Phil Rath.
All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I guess I just, a quick point of order. Due to the pending weather, if we do get warning sirens, and it sounds like it's wind right now that we're hearing, but...
Sirens.
It is sirens?
Yeah.
Okay. If we do have to take shelter, my understanding is that is in the...
Right here?
Right here, we're good?
This is a safe spot, right here.
Okay. Not the restrooms.
Right now, it's your home.
It's not my comfort, right here.
No, we're...
Window effect. Okay, then we'll be able to continue the meeting.
Just stay right here.
All right.
Way to go, Scott.
Okay. All right, so, we will stay right here, and we'll move forward to meeting. The... Under my report, I just wanted to mention that we have the special election coming up on September 10th that has been certified. That special election was prompted by the city council approving the request to move forward with the local option sales and service tax vote. Do we need to leave at least one door open?
Do we have this one open? Does that...
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be okay.
You got the one open?
We have to leave one door open?
I'll leave that door open.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. All right. The local option sales and service tax, the reason for that is that is due to expire the end of next year, and that is that 1% sales tax that the city receives from all the purchases, taxable purchases in the city. So that is from people that live here, that is from people that visit here, anybody that purchases anything that requires a sales tax. That 1 cent sales tax comes back to the city, and that would be set to expire. So we want to, first of all, continue that, or request to be able to continue that. That brings in about $4.5 million of revenue to the city. That's used for property tax relief, streets and sewer repair and replacement. The other part of that, just for a reminder, is we're requesting some additional flexibility. The split on that was 90% streets and sewers, 10% general fund property tax relief. We're requesting to move that to a 70-30 split, 70% staying with streets and sewer repairs, and 30% moving to property tax relief to help offset some of that lost revenue that we're going to see with the consolidation of the general fund over the next few years, or the continued consolidation of the general fund over the next few years. Along with that, though, last, the end of last year, our councilwoman Cyan Basu was appointed to her seat when Sandra Pope had resigned. Due to this special election being prompted by city request, that will then push that seat to an election as well, and so Cyan is welcome to continue to run for that seat, but it does open it up to anyone else in the public that would like to run as well. Those papers are due by July 19th, I believe is the date, and anybody that files, if we have more than two people running for that seat, that would prompt primary election, which would be held on August 13th if necessary, otherwise September 10th would be election day for the council seat. So this is something that was prompted, and it would only be for the remainder of that term, which would be through January 1st of 2026. So it's a little more than a year that that seat would be open for.
And then to confirm, they would have to rerun if they would like to sit on the...
Correct. Yeah. They would run again November of '25, or if it was a primary, you know, before that.
Thank you.
And that's all I had for tonight. Honorable Mayor?
Okay. This is the point in our meeting where I ask if anybody would like to speak on any of tonight's agenda items. I don't have any slips from anybody. We do have one gentleman that would like to speak when we get to the end of our council session, where I ask if anybody wants to speak on any non-agenda items, but does anybody want to speak on any of tonight's agenda items? Okay, if not, and I'll call you up later when we get to that section, Jerry. Okay, we have four public hearings to go through, so I'll have Chris start those.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and issuance of notes not to exceed $350,000 to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder.
I'll go ahead and open the public hea... Public heating. Public hearing, and Cole O'Donnell, our finance director, will handle this.
You haven't got the air conditioner installed in your office, so it is heating a little bit, so... Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Previously, urban renewal bonds could be issued as general obligation. House File 718 changed the designation of these types of bonds that now must be issued under general obligation urban renewal designation. As such, the $350,000 budgeted to support grants and projects at the Westgate Urban Renewal area must be, well, it's not necessarily that issued separately, we have staff to hold a public hearing. They will be issued as part of the larger, but designated, that portion will be designated as the general obligation urban renewal, and we must hold a public hearing if we're doing it.
Counsel, have any questions for Mr. O'Donnell? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public... Oh. Since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have any questions that they'd like to ask? Hearing none. I'd go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 120, 2024, instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not-to-exceed $350,000 general obligation urban renewal capital loan notes. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 120, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the disposition of city-owned property located at 535 Elma to Alma Perez.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Jake, are you gonna take this?
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening, council. The city acquired the property at 535 Elma through 657 Action. The city accepted bids on the property until 2 o'clock May 9th, 2024. We received nine bids. Ama Perez submitted the best bid in the amount of $8,777.77, and the staff recommends accepting that bid.
I had a question. How did the city acquire this property? Was it through a tax sale, or...
657 Action. So this was a placid property that didn't follow through. We went through the core system, took the property, and then we're putting it in the hands of somebody else to rehabilitate it.
Does counsel have any questions for Zach? I mean Jake? The heat must've got to me in my office today.
Sorry, buddy.
Anybody have any questions for Jake? Anybody in the audience have any questions regarding this piece of property? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 123, 2024, accepting the bid and approving the disposal of 535 Elma to Alma Perez for the sum of $8,777.77. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 123, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the disposition of city-owned property located at 508 South Moore to Manny Martinez.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Jake, you're gonna handle this one as well.
All right. Thank you. So again, this was another property that the city acquired through 657A Action. The city accepted bids until 2 o'clock PM, May 9th, 2024. We receive six bids on this property. Manny Martinez submitted the best bid in the amount of $7,300, and the staff recommends awarding him the bid, so he can start rehabilitation of his property.
Does counsel have any questions for Jake? Does anyone in the audience have any questions regarding this property? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 124, 2024, accepting the bid and approving the disposal of 508 South Moore, Atomo, Iowa, to Manny Martinez for the sum of $7,300. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 124, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposal to convey interest in real property to Twenty One Properties LLC pursuant to a proposed purchase and development agreement.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Jake, you're gonna handle this one as well.
Thank you. So a little bit later, we'll see that Twenty One Properties is a changed name from the last council meeting, the, what was brought for, before your last council meeting. Twenty One Properties LLC is an entity for cading properties, is seeking workforce housing tax credits for a middle-density infill development project using city-owned vacant lots. The city received a presentation about the proposed project on the meeting of May 7th. This resolution approves the purchase agreement for up to 30 lots used for middle-density infill housing. To provide the local incentive for this project, staff is proposing to leverage the building in Atomo program to provide $10,000 per unit. There'll be no TIF incentives proposed for this project, although the developer would the developer would be able to take advantage of the urban revitalization tax abatement that is available to anyone in the city completing qualified projects. Other terms for this purchase agreement included the purchase is on the condition of the workforce housing tax credit being approved, and on the condition of due diligent period where cading will undertake at its expense the acquisition study for, to determine the viability of each project. So, pretty much, they're asking for, was agreement at $500 for the projects per...
Abstracts.
For the abstracts, for the agreement, they're asking for the total cost now, and that's due to several different things, including they're not asking for all 30 properties at one time. They're going to do their study and only ask for properties that appeal to them due to the study, and that they're doing it as three separate purchases. So that was kind of the agreement that they would have, so that we would pay the total cost instead of the 500.
Okay, I have a question. At the last council meeting, the council approved an agreement with Bloomfield Acres. This, they just had a name change to Twenty One Properties? This isn't a different company, is it?
That's later in the meeting. They are changing their name only, and that was looked at by our attorneys as well. There's nothing really there, other than just a name change for them, so...
Just for transparency purposes, I want to make sure people understood it's not a different company to just rename themselves.
Same company going through a name change.
Okay.
For this development.
Counsel, have any questions for Jake?
I got a couple of questions for him. You may or may not know.
Doug, can you talk into the microphone? I can't hear you with the air conditioning.
Hey, most women don't want me to talk at all. No, I'm kidding. The, did they explain why in two weeks' time they changed their mind and want us to pay more for the abstracts?
So this was kind of an agreement that was set forth. I think it was due to kind of what they're giving. They're giving us, they're not wanting us to get abstracts on 30 properties all at once. They're breaking that up into three. They're also gonna do a study on each individual lot before they have us do an abstract on that, so they're kind of saving us some money, and then it's usually on the seller to go ahead and do the abstract, so they went ahead and asked us for that in return.
Okay.
And I think they were in negotiation with the attorney on this development agreement between the last meeting and this meeting.
I know that, I know that they spoke with the attorneys and Zach, so...
Yeah, yeah, I'm not for this, because they came with their proposal last time, and we all agreed, and when in two weeks' time, now they want more.
Well, I think, I think instead of asking us to do the abstract on 30 properties all at once, this is kind of a step back in saying, hey, you can have three different times that you, we'll give you three different sections of abstracts instead of all at once, and we're also gonna do a study on them before we ask you to get the abstracts, so you're not wasting money there. And in return, they ask that we pay the total amount instead of the 500. I also talked to Zach, and he said that usually these range from 800 to 1,000, so it's not like it's gonna be a ton of money, based on, you know, the time that they have put into it.
Unless they can't find an abstract and they gotta recreate one, that gets a little bit more pricey.
Right. Yeah.
Well, we have access to the study that they're doing, too?
That's the question I don't know. I would imagine, but all I know is that they're not gonna ask us to go ahead with the abstract unless they're interested in the property due to their study.
Administrator Rath, do you know if we'll have access to that study, too?
No, I don't know that answer, but I mean, it is a partnership with the developer, so I think we'd be working with them on that. And I think that was the give and take of, part of that negotiation was, as an offset for being requested to pay more towards an abstract, like Jake said, we weren't gonna be asked to have to come up with that money all at once either, and that was written into the agreement structured that way, so that both parties knew what to expect there.
The study will also tell them if it's good for single-family or multi-dwelling, you know, so it's gonna be a beneficial study, could get more units than, you know...
What's our, and maybe you don't know this, but our ROI or our return on investment with these? Do we kind of have an idea or how quickly we would get that return of investment?
They have the tax abatement that we give to everyone, so they'll have that, but I mean, eventually, there'll be a return on investment.
And part of that will depend on if, like, with this study, are they able to put a single home on it, a duplex, a quadplex? You know, the more units that you have there is going to be more tax revenue, but also more homes for families, more people in the community purchasing goods that will help everywhere else, too.
The benefit of development is huge. I mean, that's...
Yeah, that's what I was kind of trying to get to also, that, first off, these are market-rate housing. This is not low-income housing. There was some confusion about that all over Facebook, so I just want to clarify. These are market-rate housing. And then also, there's this idea, and actually, you can go and look, there's studies that show, but when we kind, when we have nicer homes come to areas or people fix up homes, then we see other homes in that area start to...
Absolutely. We've done some, some projects where we give some money towards neighborhoods, and it seems like once one neighborhood starts, or one neighbor starts, it's a trickling effect, and I think that would be the case here as well.
Yeah. I think that's just an important fact.
And those infill lots are doing nothing for us now, so, other than we're mowing them.
Say that one more time.
The infill lots now are doing nothing, other than having us mow them, so this is a big deal.
So we're losing money on them.
We're losing money on them.
Thank you.
I want people to know that I'm for this, but I'm not for them changing after two weeks and wanting us to pay more, so I just want to be clear on that.
I think, yeah, and I do think there's just a little bit of give and take there, so...
Bill, we figured, wouldn't it, as soon as three years, we're making money, correct? I mean, we're seeing revenue. After three years, I believe, for single families, it's three years on the urban revitalization. Yeah, we start to see revenue. And then after that would be revenue coming in, depending on, you know, if it's a multiple lot, it would go under the other housing, which has a sliding scale, I think, over 10 years. So you may see some of that revenue, again, after just a couple of years, and percentage ramped up till it gets to 100%. And in, Councilman McIntyre, I completely understand what you're saying, but I think last time, they were talking about the concept of the project, and they didn't have the final draft. We weren't approving the development agreement last time. It was the concept of it, which they were still negotiating over, and this is the final development agreement that they're hoping to have approved towards that project.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I don't know exactly where they were at with Zach and the attorneys when they brought it to, you know, they did mention that they weren't gonna be able to be here this time, but I think it was in the works, so I don't know that anything was solid at that time.
And also, just to clarify, and correct me if I'm wrong, even though we'd be spending a little bit of extra money on these abstracts, it's all coming from the Build Atomo Fund, which we've already allocated monies towards for projects like this, correct?
The $10,000 per unit comes from the Build Atomo Fund. The other dollars would come from, did he have it down there?
I was looking for that.
I don't know if you know off the hand, Cole, but from economic development for the lots that pay for the abstracts?
I don't see on here where that money would be coming from. You have it identified on here.
Okay. All right. That would most likely then come from either the Community Development Fund, which is a part of the general fund, unless we have any partners that would assist with development of that, or the funding for that.
Does counsel have any other questions for Jake? Has anyone in the audience had any questions that they'd like to ask, since this is a public hearing?
Can I ask, if, if this is in three parcels?
Dr. Haas, could you come up and identify yourself and your address, please?
Thank you. Good evening, Ted Haas. My question would be, is if this is divided into three lots, is there a timeframe for each lot to be done?
So I don't really see that, let's see. It says over three years, so there'd be three separate closings over three different years.
Like, three project years. So it's not three lots, is these lots, it's 30 lots throughout the city? So it might be that they purchased eight lots the first year, and 14 the next year, and then the remainder the third year. It depends on their availability and their scheduling and everything, but over the course of the three years, the goal would be that, those 30 lots. I, I think I understand. Are you saying, like, we don't want to have a bunch of construction that's going nowhere, and just sitting there? Is that what you're seeing? Yeah, that was a concern I addressed, too, is they're gonna keep going, right? They're not just gonna come to a sudden stop, and then all of a sudden, it's an ice war.
And that's what they had clarified in the last meeting, too, that their idea was to have multiple projects going on at once, so that they could have a bigger crew, hopefully local crews, where they could kind of go from, like, if they have this person working here, then if that person's needed over here, so they could have multiple ones going on at once, too. So it wasn't just gonna be like one, and then one's waiting. That was my understanding.
Yeah, they'd be able to leverage the skill, the work that they have, so if they needed electric, work done, you know, they might have four or five homes being done at once for the electric, or, you know, and that would be set up to lots that they had available, and availability of labor, and, you know, weather and everything else, so...
There, there is also a completion guarantee under Section 2.7 of the agreement.
And it's their, it's to their benefit to have them completed and sold. Or, I should say rented, I'm sorry, to clarify, they were renting those, and they were planning to have a landlord in the area to maintain, or property manager in the area for maintaining all those properties.
Any other questions from counsel? Any other questions or comments from the public? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
We're closing the public hearing.
Oh, okay. Yes, my bad.
Resolution number 127, 2024, approving and authorizing the conveyance of certain real property to Twenty One Properties LLC, and approving and authorizing execution of a related purchase and development agreement. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 127, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
Thank you.
We have no ordinances tonight, so we'll move to departmental recommendations or reports.
Approve grant application to the Bureau of Justice Assistance to participate in the 2024 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, and authorize the mayor or chief of police to sign any related documents as may be required. Recommendation, approve submission of the grant application, and authorize the mayor or chief of police to sign any related documents as may be required.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Police Chief Farrington, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Bulletproof vests currently have about a five-year shelf life. Each year, we budget for vests as we need them. We've been partnering with the Bureau of Justice Assistance for their Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program. What we're looking at is this will run until August of 2026 for this grant. It'll be for the purchase of about 12 vests at the cost of $14,676. We can, depending on the application process, we can get up to 50% reimbursement, so around $7,338 could be coming back from them.
And this has been something ongoing that you've done in the past?
Yes.
So, does counsel have any questions for Police Chief Farrington?
And these would be the vests that the patrol officers wear every day in the field.
Okay, if there's no questions, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 117, 2024, approving changes to the compensation handbook. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 117, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Okay, and Barb Kojo, our HR director, is gonna take this.
Thank you, sir. So this, this change to the compensation handbook has four items on it. We are, we've made one change to page 19, just adding FY '24 to show that that's what our current compensation structure is. We are adding page 20, which reflects a 3.2% COLA increase for our unrepresented employees. This was what was budgeted, and it was part of the budget that you all had approved previously. We change, are working, we are changing the title of Beach Supervisor to Aquatic Facilities Manager on Appendix A, which is the classification structure. This, again, is another thing that was budgeted into the budget that you had approved previously, and then adding that Aquatic Facilities Manager to the Grade Seven on the classification framework.
Council, have any questions for Barb? Not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 118, 2024, approving updates to the personnel policy. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 118, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Barb.
Thank you, sir. So I'll just go over the changes here quickly. First thing on there is we did change in the personnel policy any references of he or he, him, or her to they, them, they're, anything like that through the entire manual. Civil Service, in Article Five, we did update that since the HR department has taken over the civil service process, that we would serve as that clerk of that commission. Article Eight, with the wages and job classifications, and you'll see this as you go through some of the benefits parts of it as well. This is, if you remember at our last meeting, we had an MOU with the police department about changing our accruals, going from some of them changing in July, some of them resetting in November. This is putting that into our personnel policy. So again, all, all of our accruals will reset come January first. Nobody is going to lose any accruals, and we'll work to make sure. It's just simply changing, instead of everything resetting at different times, it'll all go January first, so. Article Nine, the hours of work, we are adding wording in here that matches the collective bargaining agreements regarding lunches and breaks. Article Ten, we are adding this, this is regarding the probationary period for all employees, and this mirrors our civil service code. With anything that is a civil service position, there is what is typically a six-month probationary period. For some of our other, some of our public safety positions, that may be anywhere between six to 12 months. So it's just adding that into it, so that way we have very specific wording that essentially mirrors our civil service code. Again, with the benefits, there are holiday that's changing that accrual. And then we also did add into our personnel handbook that any employee that works on a holiday, they do receive an overtime rate of 1.75 for hours worked. This would match exactly what's in the collective bargaining agreement. So it's in the collective bargaining agreements now, we're just making the personnel policy match that collective bargaining agreement. Same thing with sick, that is the accrual incentive. And then parental leave, all of that, again, is still just resetting those to January first. Funeral leave, the one thing that we did want to add in here, and this was due to our negotiation with the fire department, one of the things that was brought up is that many of, that oftentimes now, funerals or celebrations of lives are not held immediately after someone passes. It might take a couple of months to get through it, or travel, or whatever. So what we are proposing to add here, which is what we have added with our fire department, is that the employee may use the leave within 12 months of the date of death, and that's just adding that into our personnel policy.
How many days do they get per incident?
It depends on the relationship of the person, and that's something that we want to take a look at if for future to review, because we do understand that we don't have traditional family structures everywhere, so. Yeah, it, it's anywhere between one to three to five, so. Accident reports, or accident review, we did update this, that, again, the HR department has taken over everything pertaining to risk management for workers' compensation or anything essentially with our employees. So we updated the accident review section. And then we also updated the formatting, just to understand it better. Again, we did not change anything that's in there, it was just simply to make it easier to understand. And then Article Thirty, under the dress code, we just rearranged the items that were in there. What we found is that I think the same, like, seven paragraphs were repeated three different times in there. So again, just trying to streamline it as much as we can and, and make it make a little bit more sense.
I just want to say I appreciate your due diligence and always trying to make sure that the personnel policy handbook mirrors the collective bargaining agreements, so that they don't contradict each other. And I know that's happened sometimes in the past, so I do appreciate your due diligence and trying to make sure all that stuff lines up and is consistent.
Thank you.
Does council have any questions for Barb?
I have a point of clarification. So before, just with, regarding the compensation and personnel policies, you, as an HR department, not you personally, but the HR department, cannot make any changes without council approval, correct? Correct. Okay. Like, even things as simple as putting in, like, FY24, you still have to get our approval. Okay. Something as simple as what I noticed, as I, only, once I was here looking at this compensation handbook, at the bottom, it says revised July of 2023. It actually needs to say revised Ju, or May of 2024. So that's even a change that, that I need to make, that I would probably have to bring back to you all to make that one simple change, so. Yes, I cannot change anything unless you all approve that. Thank you. Yes.
Any other questions from council for Barb? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 121, 2024, designating depositories for city monies and city funds not to exceed the sums indicated per financial institution. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 121, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. O'Donnell, it's back.
Thank you. Per Iowa code, cities are required to pass an annual resolution naming depositories and deposit maximums for each institution. Limits are designed to maximize return and liquidity while limiting potential risk of deposits. Local governments are limited to interest-bearing accounts or approved investment trusts. Generally, staff attempts to keep, to keep funds in local institutions in order to support local investment. In an effort to maximize return, several institutions with local branches but not locally owned have been added, but we have put them at a smaller limit rate. IPAT is, has a large deposit limit to reflect current balance and to allow for short-term gains. Rates for IPAT are monitored on a weekly basis to ensure that rates are at or above CD rates. Wells Fargo deposits are for the check, the city's checking account. Normal balances run between seven to nine million dollars. Staff has set the deposit limit at 15 million to reflect the receipt of the 2024 bond issuance. Bond funds must be maintained at, in the, will be maintained in the checking account to limit investment returns. If debt issuances earn a greater rate of return than the interest being paid on the debt, the city must refund purchasers of the bonds the difference. Checking account, checking accounts tend to earn lower rates than IPAT and CDs. It should be noted that deposit limits are not actual balances, so when you look at the resolution, that's not their actual balance. Actual deposits in each institution will fluctuate but not exceed the limit set.
Council have any questions for Mr. O'Donnell?
And in front of you, you have treasurer's reports or balance sheets. On the very back sheet, it shows you what the current, where the current investments are in the balances, so you have an idea of where that's at. These will, these plus May will be presented to the council for approval in June. Just getting caught up, so got these all prepared. Thought you should have them in front of you, and then we'll prove them at another meeting.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 125, 2024, a resolution rescinding resolution number 115, 2024. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 125, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Jake.
All right, so this is kind of what the mayor asked about before. At council meeting, on May seventh, the city approved a resolution in support of the workforce housing tax credit project for Kading Properties for the middle density infill development on Bacon Mots. That resolution used the entity Bloomfield Acres LLC. However, Kading is seeking a tax credit using the entity Twenty One Properties LLC. This is resolution, remind, rescinds the previous resolution number 115.
So are they actually just changing the name, or do they have two different LLCs?
I'd imagine that both of these LLCs exist. They're just using this LLC name for this property, for this project.
Council have any questions for Jake? Okay, if not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 126, 2024, resolution in support of a workforce housing development project by Twenty One Properties LLC. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 126, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Jake.
All right, this resolution, resolution is the new resolution in support with the corrected entity. The only other change between this resolution and the previous resolution is that the resolution 126, 2024 clarifies developers' obligations. Kading Twenty One Properties LLC will complete projects on the lots that clear due diligence and are sold. But they may not be all thirty lots, they may not ultimately purchase all thirty of these lots. In the future, they may purchase other lots not included in the first purchase agreement.
Council have any questions for Jake? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 128, 2024, approving a memorandum of understanding to modify the tentative agreement related to collective bargaining. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 128, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved, second.
Okay, Barb.
Thank you, sir. Back in, I believe it was March, we had a tentative agreement with our municipal employees, and since that time, we had heard some concerns, they wanted to hear more about moving to our compensation handbook. And so this MOU in front of you now is, we provided them some more information, kind of gave them, walked them through where they would be on that compensation handbook, and the employees in the municipal employee unit agreed to go to that compensation handbook. So the MOU in front of you approves that, and then what will happen is, if you approve that, I will update the contract, send that over to them, they will sign that, and you will hopefully see that within the next couple of meetings to sign and approve.
And this is effective July first, right?
Correct.
Does council have any questions for Barb regarding this item? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a point in our city council meeting, we're asked if anybody would like to speak on any items that are not on our agenda tonight, and we do have one individual that would like to speak on legalizing golf carts for city street use. So, Mr. Phillips, would you come up and identify yourself and give your address? You have three minutes.
I am Jerry Phillips, I reside at 323 Bryan Road here in Atumwa. Good evening, Mayor Johnson and council. I'm here this evening to propose to the council its consideration for Atumwa to adopt the same standards and regulations for golf cart street use as the state of Iowa, Waplo County, and numerous other municipalities throughout, throughout Iowa. I have recently spoke with Police Chief Farrington, Fire Chief Short, regarding this proposed change in, in law. Both individuals have stated they are open to this change. I have invited numerous citizens of Atumwa that are in favor of this proposal, that are in attendance tonight. Several of them wasn't able to come because of the weather, but they have multiple people that are still in favor on that. I wish to thank the mayor and the city council members for this opportunity to present this proposal to you. For your consideration of this matter is greatly appreciated. Thank you all for your time, and this time, does anybody have any questions?
I guess one question that I would have, you know, the city council has approved UTVs in the city limits of Atumwa. They have headlights on them, do golf carts normally have?
Yes.
Lights on them?
Yes. Lights, horns, turn signals, some of them have turn signals. I printed off a copy of what the state guidelines are, if you'd like to hear them. I don't want to bore you with laws if you don't want them, but I would be glad to, I did print them off if you'd like to hear them.
Yeah, go ahead.
Code 321.247, Golf Car Operations on City Streets. Incorporated areas may, upon approval of their governing body, allow the operation of golf carts on city streets by persons possessing a valid driver's license. However, a golf cart shall not be operated upon a city street which is primary road extension through the city, but shall be allowed to cross a city street which is a primary road extension throughout the city. Golf carts shall be equipped with a slow-moving vehicle sign, bicycle safety flag, and operate on streets only from sunrise to sunset. Golf carts operated on city streets will be equipped with adequate brakes and shall meet any other requirements imposed by the governing body. Golf carts are not subject to registration provisions of this chapter. That is the Iowa guidelines, Waplo County uses the same guidelines. I have also done a lot of research with municipalities around the state. Pleasant Hill has adopted the same one, Williamsburg, same. I mean, I can go on and on with a bunch of them, that is, you know, they all adopt the same thing. Sometimes they'll add to it, but obviously you can't detract from it.
Even though the council can't take any action on this tonight, because it's not on the agenda, does any of the council members have any questions they'd like to ask Mr. Phillips?
Well, yeah, I got a couple of comments. I would like to add that, that the way Jerry did it here was very well. He all, he had all his ducks in a row, he'd done all his research, and he actually, when, when he first started speaking about this, the first thing he started speaking about was safety, safety, safety. So you can see that he has many people with him who support him, and, and there are others who support him. So I actually want to thank everybody for, for coming and supporting it. I mean, I wish more people who had a cause would do that. So I, you know, I, we do have to put it on the agenda, it, it is something that I like the idea of, so I just, you know, want to appreciate Jerry about how he did it and, and how he put it together and, and approached us.
Good job, Jerry. Does council have any other questions for Mr. Phillips?
So I guess, one of the, this isn't, so I'm just going to talk real loud. So one of the things that was a big point when the UTVs came up, too, was that there was, like, insurance on vehicles, too. Do golf carts have insurance?
Yes, I have insurance on mine.
So I, I get, but, so like, people who use them on the golf course, do they usually have insurance? I don't know. I guess my thing is, I'm just asking, because I guess.
If, if there's.
I was just going to say, quick, quick point of order. We're not, we're not having the debate on this right now.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking a point of clarification on what that looks like.
I know, but I mean, if we want to have this on an agenda, then definitely answer those questions or a work session, and, and have a lot of that, and any information you have can be provided to the council ahead of that.
Sure.
It's definitely just, the more questions we ask, the public was not aware this was going to be on the agenda tonight, and they may want to hear that same information.
And I printed off multiple copies of the state law, if you would like them. I guess I did print them off, that way.
Yeah, anything that you have, we'll definitely take.
Yes, and I've got, like, one copies of each of the Pleasant Hills, Williamsburg, Albia.
Sure.
I believe in our Albias, it's like this long.
I just want to make sure we're not violating any, any laws.
Yeah, I just.
And this is important to all of you that are here, and so I want to make sure it gets its due credit and.
Sure.
So what it sounds like is we probably need a work session on this topic.
That would be a good idea, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you very much.
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jerry.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak on any items that are not on our agenda tonight? All right. Does council have any communications or announcements that they'd like to make to the public?
I'd like to make one. This Monday at 10:30, at the Jimmy Jones Shelter, we're doing our annual VFW and American Legion Memorial Day program. It's at 10:30 at Jimmy Jones. It lasts about 45 minutes to an hour, and at the end, the honor guard will list the name of the soldiers, veterans, that we buried from last Memorial Day to this one, and then we'll fire and play taps. So I encourage you to bring grandkids or kids, we're starting to see more and more kids go to that, and they need to see that kind of stuff, so hope to see you there.
It's a pretty powerful event, and I, or service, I'm sorry, not an event, but I would encourage everyone to go.
Any other announcements by anybody?
I got nothing.
It's got pages from my committees, the pages for pennies, it's on my library trustee meeting. They beat all their records, or pages for pennies did very well. Had some good sales, they got some other exciting projects going on. Waterworks, I just sat on that board today. Just some news, some of the technology they were using to do some of the scans had some problems, so they're kind of waiting for some clarification on that.
Okay. A couple announcements that I have, there are a couple important community events coming up. June first, Saturday, June first, the Third Annual Atumwa Pride Celebration in Central Park, and then June 19th is our Juneteenth Celebration. Gene, did they change that from the beach to Central Park?
As of right now, it's still at Central Park.
Okay.
We just got your application today.
Okay, because I think they were thinking they maybe should move it to Central Park because of the construction that's going on over by the beach for the indoor sports complex, but I didn't know if Diane had gotten ahold of you or not. Okay, any other announcements or anything that anybody wants to make? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn our city council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and I'd like to thank everybody again for coming to our Atumwa City Council meeting tonight, and hopefully.